Thank you. Good morning and welcome to the Ordinary Council meeting for the 24th of February 2022, held in the council chambers. We're commencing this meeting at 9:01. I am, and I call attendance this morning and delighted to see everyone is here this morning. Good morning to you all.
Good morning.
And we move on to acknowledgement of country by Council Kuntzman.
Thank you, Mayor. We Ipswich City Council acknowledge and recognise the sovereign and human rights of the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people and the communities of Ipswich to self-determination, meaningful engagement with local government, and shared governance and decision-making. We commit through the Indigenous Accord to the strengthening of bonds between council and the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander communities of Ipswich.
Thank you very much, Council Kuntzman. We'll move on to the opening prayer. Sheila Ireland, would you like to lead us into prayer?
Thank you, Mayor. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that affect the citizens of Ipswich City, and continue to remind us that all that we do here today, all that we accomplish, is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of our community, and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Council Island. We're now moving to apologies and leave of absence, and there are none. So go to item five for two condolences. We have two condolence motions this morning. The first one is by councillor Doyle. Councillor Doyle, I'll hand over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that council express its condolences on behalf of the city to the family of the late Mr Kenneth George Smith, who passed away in Ipswich on 10 February 2022. Ken, affectionately dubbed the unofficial mayor of One Mile, led a long and full life of nine children: Gordon, Clarence, Alison, Audrey, Irene, Marjorie, Nancy, and Jack. He took his first breath in One Mile in the Seamen Street house his parents had built around 1905, after their immigration from England. He was to spend most of his life in this house, and perhaps would never have travelled far beyond his suburb and his city if not for a world war. In early 1942, aged just 18 and keen for adventure with his mates, Ken signed up to serve his country. His first army camp was at the Ipswich showgrounds, where his first job was to lay bitumen from the main road to the pavilion. Later, he was attached to a medical unit, and from 1943 until 1945, served as an army stretcher bearer during the Papua New Guinea and Solomon Islands campaigns. These, of course, were some of the darkest days of the war for Australia and Australians, with the fierce and relentless fighting at our doorstep. It's difficult to imagine the pain and suffering this young man from One Mile would have witnessed as he struggled to help wounded Australian soldiers in those terrible jungle battlefields. But he survived. Years later, speaking of his wartime experiences, he would say, "I thought it was going to be an adventure, and I soon realised it was nothing like that. It wasn't very nice, but those are the things you try and forget. You think of the good times." With his duty done and the war over, Ken returned home back to Seamen Street to begin the rest of his life. He married Ellen, known as Nellie. They would have four children, Graham, Diane, Dennis, and Robyn. In time, nine grandchildren, 26 great-grandchildren and two great-great-grandchildren to date would follow. Ken and his beloved Nellie were together for 15 years until she passed in early 2000s. Outside the home, Ken, who had begun an apprenticeship at Hancock Joyery before the war, afterwards settled at the Ipswich Railway workshops, where he would build carriages for the next 40 years. He enjoyed an eclectic range of interests. He hunted ducks and rabbits. He trained Labrador Retrievers, winning several championships. He coached a premiership-winning Western Second Grade Rugby League side in the late 40s. In 1960, he started the Ipswich Gun Club. Ken was a member of the RSL and the Incapacitated Servicemen and Women Association. He was a fixture at Ipswich Anzac Day and Remembrance Day ceremonies, commemorations, often attending with his family, and at local schools, where he would speak with students about his military service. About Anzac Day, he said, "The day means thinking about the mates that I've lost and the ones who still survived. It's a sad day. It brings back a lot of memories, good and bad." In later years, Ken was passionate and committed advocate for the creation of an honour roll plaque near the Likeheart Park Centre Park, featuring the names of the One Mile men who served in World War II. Former councillor Charlie Pasali, Ken's local councillor for many years, said Ken's long-term efforts were crucial to the success of the project. Charlie noted Ken's sense of humour and his positive spirit, which many others have mentioned since his passing. "And that was my experience of Ken too, with whom I had the pleasure to chat with several times in the last few years." Sadly, Ken passed away aged 98 earlier this month. On behalf of the city, I pass on our sincere condolences to Ken's family, valed to the mayor of One Mile. You will be missed and remembered. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much, councillor Doyle. That was quite lovely. It was quite a moving funeral on Monday. Nearly 200 people were in the room, and you could hear the love from the whole community for him. Are there any other points? Yes, councillor Ireland?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that council express its condolences on behalf of the city...
Excuse me, councillor, is it about the condolence motion before us now?
Oh, sorry, I thought we'd pass them both together.
No, we haven't yet. No, we haven't voted on it. If there's anything else? No, I then vote on the condolence motion that councillor Ireland has put forward. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Councillor Doyle, my apologies. It's passed. Thank you very much. Councillor Ireland, I understand you have a condolence motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that council express its condolences on behalf of the city to the family of Mr Murray Kendrick, whose family is here with us today. Murray sadly passed away at the end of January at the age of 75. For those that didn't have the pleasure of knowing him, Murray was born and raised in Ipswich and ran his successful Yamato-based building design business for over 40 years. Throughout his career, Murray produced over 5,000 plans for homes and businesses in Ipswich and surrounding areas, including more than 24 plans for council projects. Some of his more notable work includes the Nerima Gardens bridges and the bird hides at College's Crossing. His designs were also used at the Bendamba Tafe College to teach drafting fundamentals. Murray was well-respected in both the building and design industries, and played a key role in establishing the Building Designers' Association of Queensland, BDAQ, and running the Ipswich chapter. His wife Carmel and his family would like to take this opportunity to thank the many loyal clients, including council, for supporting the Kendrick design business. A talented man in a number of fields, Murray also taught landscape design at Tafe. Charitable by nature, Murray gave back to the Ipswich community in many ways, including through his pro bono designs for non-profit groups like the CWA and Ipswich Hospice, and his work with the Bevel Rotary Club. He was never a man who looked for praise or glory, but was very proud of this city and what he was able to contribute to it. Murray's wife Carmel said Murray was an avid movie collector. He had a library of 7,500 DVDs. Top Gun, James Bond, and westerns were his favourites. A talented landscaper and gardener, he knew all the botanical names, a golfer, cricketer, and passionate St George football fan, an enthusiastic traveller, and a keen drummer. Carmel remembers when his youngest daughter left home. Murray would look into the newly empty bedroom and look a bit teary. So Carmel, remembering how he had played the drums earlier in life, surprised him one day by setting up a drum kit in the empty room. After Murray passed away, a neighbour gave Carmel a card and described how they heard Murray playing his drums every night. On one occasion, they had noticed him playing one song over and over, trying to perfect it, until eventually they heard him call out, "Good one, mother!" The drums might have made a racket, but he was a quiet achiever, who would have a go at tackling most things, and whose motto was, "Do your best whatever you are doing." He is lovingly remembered by Carmel, his two daughters Belinda and Amanda, and four grandchildren, Connor, Georgia, Riley, and Ava. Council is grateful for the time and passion Murray put into the community. He is and will continue to be well and truly missed. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ireland. And now I can see there are three members of Murray's family here. Thank you very much for coming in today, and thank you for everything that Murray has done for our city. Thank you, councillor Ireland. Okay, so you move this condolence motion. All those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you so much. Move on to item...
Sorry, Mayor, an additional condolence motion?
Oh, yes, sorry. I don't have that here.
Sorry, Mayor, I thought I'd sent you...
Oh, sorry, yes. Councillor Doyle, would you like to move another condolence?
I move that council express its condolences on behalf of the city for the late Diane Brasher. It's important to note the recent passing of Diane alongside her husband Paul Brasher. She was a stalwart of the One Mile Neighbourhood Watch. Diane will be dearly missed by her husband Paul, their families, and the entire One Mile and Likeheart community. On behalf of the city, I pass on my sincere condolences to Paul and the entire Brasher family. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Doyle. We move on to item 6.1. Oh, sorry, my apologies. So councillor Doyle has moved a condolence motion for Brasher. Thank you very much. I apologise. You did notify me of that. I apologise, councillor Doyle, for that. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Now move on to item 6.1, tributes. And I believe that councillor Milligan, you have a tribute you'd like to...
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to acknowledge and congratulate Les and Marion Richlag on their 60th wedding anniversary for next Tuesday, the 3rd of March. Marion and E Wilkes grew up in Marburg, the eldest of six children. Les was from Hagsley, the youngest of six. They met and fell in love at the Marburg Dance, a regular meeting place for locals in the day. They were then married at the Marburg Agnican Church in 1962. They moved to Tivoli, where they opened a butcher shop on Tivoli Hill, where they still live now, only metres down the road from that same shop. Together, they have raised three children and have five grandchildren. Although retired, they both still lead very active lives, Les being very fit, always assisting their neighbours. Marion is an avid quilter, currently making charity quilts for the parents of premature and stillborn babies. I'm told they are best friends and still very much in love. Reaching their 60th wedding anniversary, diamond anniversary, is very special indeed and needs to be celebrated. The fact that these two amazing individuals have enjoyed such a commitment together is inspiring. They certainly are role models for enduring love, reaching such an impressive milestone together. Congratulations to you both. On behalf of the city of Ipswich, we wish you continuing health and happiness. May you enjoy a wonderful day celebrating your anniversary together.
Thank you very much, councillor Milligan. We now move on to presentation of petitions. There are none. Item eight is presentation of deputations. There are none. Nine is public participation, and there are none. Item 10 is matters of public interest, and I have two matters. Does anyone else have a matter of public interest they'd like to raise? I have one to raise on the retirement of Peter and Susie Bellingham of the Ipswich florists. And it's with great pleasure that I congratulate Pete and Susie Bellingham, now formerly of the Ipswich florists, on their retirement, and pass on thanks and best wishes for their retirement. Speaking to the local media last week, they both shared some of their favourite moments over a career spanning 40 years. Pete was born into the family business, originally opened in 1968, and joined when he left school, and has worked in the business for four decades. He met his now-wife Susie when she got a job in the florist, and the pair took over the family business a decade ago. Some of their career highlights include designing bouquets for Her Royal Highness Catherine the Duchess of Cambridge, the Queensland Governor Jeanette Young, and Ipswich's own world champion Ash Barty. Council has been a loyal customer of this local small business for many years now, purchasing wreaths for Anzac Day and Remembrance Day, flowers for birthday tributes and other special occasions. I'd like to thank Pete and Susie for their years of hard work, and congratulate them on the outstanding success of their business, and wish them the very best and the happiest of retirements. My second matter of public interest is on the future of motorsports in Ipswich. And just want to point out that, well, obviously we love our motorsports. I know councillor, the deputy mayor has noticed a motion about it later on, but it was really exciting that on the weekend, that Senators Paul Scar and Senator Paul Inhance were out at Willowbank Raceway on the weekend, along with the deputy mayor, Nicole Johnock, and her husband, and councillor Ireland and her husband, and councillor Jacob Madsen and his partner were there as well. It's great to see that the Commonwealth Government will be investing $11 million in a range of track and facility upgrades, including new lighting, track upgrades, car park upgrades, as well as new amenities and building upgrades. It's very exciting, and we do welcome this contribution from the Commonwealth Government to our city. It comes in the months leading up to one of our city's favourite events, the internationally acclaimed Winter Nats, and just in time for more in-person events such as the latest COVID-19 wage, which begins to subside. It's also a vote of confidence in the Ipswich community, and both in the track and in the community in Willowbank, who have worked so hard to build up a community of like-minded professionals, enthusiasts, and motorsports. I know we're all very proud of the facility at Willowbank, and the events it hosts, and the community of motoring enthusiasts that gives it the heart and the soul. But I think no one is more passionate about motorsports in this room than our own deputy mayor, who has more to come on the agenda in relation to this announcement. So on that note, I'd say I welcome the Commonwealth's investment of $11 million in Willowbank Raceway. Those need to be noted, both of them? Okay, so I'll move to the first one. So matters of public interest are quite new on our agenda. So I move for the retirement of Peter and Susie Bellingham to be noted. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. And on the announcement of the money for the Willowbank Raceway, I move that it be noted. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We now move on to declarations of interest in matters on the agenda.
Are you going to call for them, or...?
Yes, I'm calling for matters. Are there any declarations?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I'll go first. In accordance with section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act of 2009, I councillor Andrew Fechner informed the meeting that I have declarable conflict of interest in item 15.2, specifically in item eight of the Governance and Transparency Committee. And that is entitled Procurement Contract 17692 Organic Waste Management Services. The nature of the declarable conflict of interest is my personal relationship with Jacob Wilson, particularly his immediate family. Jacob Wilson is the chief commercial officer of Newgrove. I plan on dealing with the conflict of interest by leaving the room while the matter is discussed and voted on. Separately, I have two more declarations to make in items 15.6 and 16.5. The nature of those declarable conflicts, in accordance with Section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act, are my business interests in both A1A Proprietary Limited and Bar Heisenberg Proprietary Limited, both located in the top of town in Ipswich. I plan on dealing with both of those conflicts by leaving the room while those matters are discussed and voted on. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Council, I appreciate the openness there. Do we have any other declarable conflicts of interest, Council Madsen?
In accordance with Section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act 2009, I, Councilor Jacob Madsen, inform the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in item 15.6, titled Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee Report. The nature of the declarable conflict of interest is I'm on the executive of the Ipswich Tradeshall and Labour Day Committee, and our building, the Ipswich Tradeshall, is immediately adjacent to these redevelopment works. As a result of my conflict, I will leave the meeting room while the matter is discussed and voted on.
Thank you, Council Madsen. I would also like to declare in accordance with Section 150 EQ 3B and 150 EQ 3C of the Local Government Act, there was an email that came to all of us on Friday, the 18th, called 'Councilor feedback if any by noon', Tuesday, 2nd of February, there were two grant funding opportunities. The relevant general manager emailed all the councillors talking about the fact that there was some funding going, federal and state funding. And one of the proposed roads for that funding, which is already in our budget, is a road that I live on. So I plan on dealing with that. If there's anything that comes, I declare that conflict to the CEO and the rest of you. And if this topic ever comes up, I will deal with that conflict by leaving the room. So, under the Act, I'm required to declare this at the next available meeting, just to let you all know, so it's all upfront. Thank you.
Through you, Mayor, and a question for Councilor Madsen. Did you declare a conflict of interest in item 16.5, entitled Nicholas Street Parking Access System Upgrade? Might be beneficial.
In accordance with Section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act 2009, I, Councilor Jacob Madsen, inform the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in item 16.5, Nicholas Street Precinct Parking Access System Upgrade. The nature of my conflict of interest is I'm a member of the executive of the Ipswich Tradeshall and Labour Day Committee, and I have great pleasure in leaving the room while that matter is discussed and voted on.
Thank you, Council, and thank you too, Council Fekner. Are there any, Councilor Johnock? Deputy Mayor, so?
In accordance with Sections 150 EQ 3C and 4 of the Local Government Act 2009, I hereby give notice that I may have a declarable conflict of interest in item 16.6, Procurement Online Advertising, at the council meeting on the 27th of January 2022, and provide the following particulars. The nature of the possible conflict of interest is that there may be some perceived connection between the council decision and my minor role with a related party. The related party is Star Broadcasting Network Proprietary Limited. I am a casual employee of the related party, working three hours per week. The nature of the related party's interest in the matter is nil. I consider the matter is too remote to require declaration. However, I am providing the notice for the purposes of transparency, integrity and accountability.
So what motion do you move, Council Johnock? For when this matter comes up?
Yeah, I have a motion to...
Yes, thank you, Council Tully.
I move that as Councilor Johnock had no personal or financial benefit in item 16.6, that it be recorded that she was permitted to participate and vote on the matter as a reasonable person would trust that the final decision was made in the public interest.
Thank you. Is there a second for that particular motion? Thank you, Council Island. Any discussion? And I guess, do you wish to say anything else, Council Johnock?
No, I've got nothing further to add.
I guess, you know, I'm always wanting to be upfront, I appreciate you saying this. And I just note that during the discussion, when this item did come up in that committee, that you did make the comment that the money that was being spent, I think the up to $690,000 that was being spent on Facebook, that it should go to local digital media and local radio. You did make that comment during deliber... during the discussion. So that was my only concern on this particular matter.
I do question that I mention radio. I did mention local printed media as an option. But my overall concern with the funding going to Facebook was the prudent financial responsibilities of this council to keep to core services that to which we are legislated by.
Yep. Thank you. Any other discussion? Right of reply, Council Tully?
No, no, thank you.
So I'll put the matter to the vote, which, do you wish to restate that motion, Council Tully?
I move that as Councilor Johnock had no personal or financial benefit in item 16.6, that it be recorded that she was permitted to participate and vote on the matter as a reasonable person would trust that the final decision was made in the public interest.
Thank you. All those in favour, please raise your hand. I look around the room, it's Council Madsen, Council Island, Council Tully, Council Doyle, Council Fekner, Council Milligan, Council Kunselman. Those against, myself. And noting that Council Johnock abstained. So obviously you can stay in for that vote. Thank you. Move on to item 12, which is the confirmation of the minutes of the ordinary council meeting held on the 27th of January 2022. So I move that those minutes... I recommend, I move that those minutes be confirmed. Do I have a second? Thank you, Council Milligan. Any discussion on those? No? Okay, thank you very much. I'll put that to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's carried.
Just a point of clarification, Mayor. You mentioned that Councilor Johnock had the ability to vote on the particular item that she made the declaration for. That would have... That was at the previous council meeting, so that is already, that had already been resolved, so there's an opportunity for her to vote on that. So just for clarity, if anyone's watching at home, there was no vote on the matter in which Councilor Johnock was discussing her conflict of interest on?
At the Governance and Transparency Committee? Today, I thought, was a discussion about her voting on the minutes?
Sorry, Mayor, it was a previous council meeting, the 27th of January. So the vote was really just to the acceptance of the minutes.
Right.
Yep.
Thank you. We move on to item 14, which is business outstanding, including conduct matters and matters lying on the table. So there is a... There was an outstanding matter that was sitting on the table from the Governance and Transparency Committee. That was regards to procurement Rebel Domain Parkman Facility lease. I think there were some discussions and an email that was sent out to the councillors. So the recommendation that sits on the table, you have in front of you, which is recommendation A and B?
Mayor, I'm happy to move that they both...
Thank you.
Proceed.
Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Council Johnock. Any discussion on that?
Just happy that the officers are doing really great work when it comes to the criteria for this expression of interest. So looking forward to seeing what can be there, really.
Thank you very much. If there's no other discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's passed. The next item on the matter is the... That was laid on the table on the 27th of January. And that matter is that item 14.2 told the media and corporate communications policy be lifted off the table. So I move to lift this off the table. Do I have a second for that? Council Tully, thank you. I move that that particular item be moved to the 10th of March, Growth and Infrastructure Waste Meeting for a recommendation. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Council Tully. Any discussion on that? No, I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. I see it's unanimous and carried. Yes, the March, it's the 10th of March, I think. We move on now to item 15, which is reception consideration of committee reports. The first one being the 15.1, the Growth and Infrastructure Waste Committee. And I've had a request for us to pass that, I guess, in two motions. The first being removing, I guess, item 4, which is the proposed repairs to unmaintained roads policy. So I propose that we... That we note items 1 through to 3 and items 5 through to 7. So 1 through to 3 and 5.
I beg your pardon, Mayor.
Sorry?
The GIW has full delegation. So I guess that if there was any commentary around a particular item, that could just come up in the discussion of the noting of the minutes of the GIW?
Happy to do it that way. I'll just check with the council that requested this. They're okay with that, no problem. In that case, I will move that that report is noted. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Council Fekner. Are there any questions on matters in that report? Council Milligan, did you have...?
Sorry, Mayor, I was a bit lost in the translation then. I would like to, if possible, call for the appropriate council officer to just answer a couple of questions that I may have with regards to just a couple of specifics regarding item 4, the proposed repairs to unmaintained roads policy.
Thank you. So ask for Mr Milligan, to come to the lectern, please.
Good morning, Mayor and councillors. Sean Madigan, General Manager, Infrastructure and Environment.
Thank you. Council Milligan?
Good morning, Mr Madigan. The reasoning for my wishing to ask for the clarification in this place is so that it, the answers are clear to the community. I have observed some level of misunderstanding and misinformation circulating. So to be responsible as a member of this council, I'd like that to be quite clear. My first question is with regards to the methodology that will be engaged in assessing each site.
Certainly. Each site that's identified by the community to the department will be assessed on an individual basis. Fundamentally, what we are looking at is safety issues and to ensure that those unmaintained roads can in fact be safely traversed. So the type of works you'd be referring to will be the filling of potholes, washouts that occur, you know, when we have rain, as we are now. Might be back in there with additional gravel and regrading of those to make them traversable.
Thank you. My next question was with regards to what works would be undertaken. So you've done very well covering both. And my last question with regards to the matter is the current allocated level of funding in the current budgetary year and the three-year capital works programme.
Certainly. The budget for this is operational, so it doesn't form capex. There is capex, capital expenditure, for the sealing of some unformed roads. As you know, the upgrade to sealed roads. We currently don't have any funds specifically allocated in this financial year, given the fact that this is a new policy. However, we can cover the costs of it with the existing operational budget that we already have within our Works and Field Services City Maintenance Team. The cost involved isn't significant, so the report there indicates $50,000 would be sufficient. Many of the councillors would be aware that we formally had a policy in relation to doing these works prior to 2019. And our experience from back then tells us that $50,000 is pretty sufficient, given the fact that you're really only talking about materials and services there. So the actual purchase and acquisition of gravel and the like to repair those roads.
There would be an additional saving, for want of a better term, in that the schedule of works would be done whilst the crews are within the local geographic area.
Yep, that's correct, yeah. There have been numerous instances where the community have approached us whilst we're out doing works, and they have an unmaintained road that might have a large pothole or washout on it, and have requested whether we could, whilst we're there, do some of the works. For obvious governance reasons, our officers, without a policy, were unable to assist there, even though they are generally willing to do so. Now that we have this policy, it creates the proper governance and process for us to be able to assist our community in that regard.
Thank you, Mr Madigan. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr Madigan? Yes?
Thank you, Mayor, it's not a... Point of order, Mayor. I don't believe this discussion should be happening in the reception of this report. To you, Chair, I believe that we should have moved outside of standing orders if we were to discuss something that has already been resolved by this council. If we needed clarification on a resolution of council, then I believe we should have moved outside of standing orders, rather than talking about the report that's just been noted.
Thank you, thank you, Council Fekner. I note that this has been moved and seconded, so we're still in that questioning phase. I know that the GIW has a full delegation, but it's still, I will still allow some questions on this. Okay. Thank you. Yes, Council?
Could I add to that? I think it's an unusual situation where the decision has actually already been made, but I think the discussion is within the ambit before the full council meeting, because it can't change the decision. But the width and breadth and nature of what has been agreed as a general discussion.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from Mr Madigan?
Mayor, I just want to include that that was my intent, not to...
Yes. I don't think there's any intention...
Because nothing can be changed.
My understanding from Council speaking beforehand was wanting to clarify what that policy was, is my understanding. I also note at the last meeting that Council, I was quite keen to... She told me after the meeting that she wanted to add some things as well. So did you wish to ask Councilor Madigan a question? Noting that the decision has already been made, we're not looking to change the decision?
I didn't have a question. I just wanted again to thank the staff who wrote that policy, because we have been working blind for the last two years. And so if you could pass my thanks on, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Madigan.
Thank you.
So just moving into discussion on the matter, I guess the main point I want to make, the fact that I think there was some misunderstanding in the community and some media reports that this council included $1.5 million in the last budget for unmaintained roads, which is quite a record amount. This particular policy here was talking about that those spot repairs to unmaintained roads. So just a bit of a difference there. I think that was the clarification that Council Milligan was after. Yes, Council Madsen?
Mayor, can we just be a bit more careful with our language and delineate between funds allocated to upgrade a classification of road and funds allocated to perform maintenance on a classification of road? There's two different pots there.
Absolutely.
And I just want it to be clear for the community.
Yeah, I think that's what we're trying to do here today. Any other discussion on the GIW report? Put the matter for a vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. We move on to 15.2, which is the Governance and Transparency Committee Report. I'll hand over to the Chair to move and speak to that particular report.
Thank you, Mayor. I am more than happy this morning to move that the minutes of the Governance and Transparency Committee
Just through you, Mayor, and...
Held on 1 December 2021 be confirmed.
My apologies, I think Council Fekner wanted to leave.
Just through you, Mayor, and a question for Council...
If you seek to raise a point of order...
Would you mind splitting it up? Council Madsen, I've got a conflict of interest in item 8 of the Governance and Transparency.
More than happy to, Council Fekner. I would suggest that we split item 8 out to be voted on its own and allow Council Fekner to leave the room, I believe.
So is that your motion, that we would...
Thanks, Council Madsen.
The recommendations of 1 through to 7 and 9 through to 11? Council Madsen, would that be the recommendation? Yep, thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Council Kunselman. I then hand over to you, Council, would you wish to speak to recommendations 1 through to 7 and 9 through to 11?
Excuse me, Council Madsen, through you, Chair. So I also have a conflict... So I also have a conflict of interest in that item. So we'll need to, as previously determined by that committee, and we'll need to leave for that item as well.
Yes. The deputy mayor did disclose that conflict of interest at the G T C two weeks ago.
Through you, Chair. Councillor Johnic, which item was that?
So...
Item eight, the same item eight.
Same one.
I think, I'm just giving councillor Johnic some, I think she wished to make...
In accordance with section one fifty E M of the Local Government Act two thousand and nine, I councillor Nicole Johnic informed the meeting that I have a prescribed conflict of interest in item eight. Sorry. Of the Growth in Infrastructure and Waste Committee, tenth of February. And it was titled... Procurement contract, sorry. Sorry, Governance and Transparency Committee, titled procurement contract for food organics, green organics. The nature of the prescribed conflict of interest is that I have two brothers that work for one of the tenders, Ramondas. I will leave the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you. I'll move back to you as the mover, councillor Madsen. You wish to, and also as the Chair, to, do you wish to speak to items one through to seven, nine through to eleven?
I need to say that we deliberated on all matters at the Governance and Transparency Committee and I stick to the recommendations of that committee. I haven't heard any or received any feedback as to why we should look into the matters further this morning. So I proceed that, sorry, I believe we should proceed as I've already stated.
Are there any other people who would like to make any points or comments on items one through to seven or nine through to eleven? If there are none, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous. And before we move on to item eight of that committee, I'll just wait for councillor Feknun and the deputy mayor to leave. Thank you, councillor Madsen. Would you like to...
Happy to move it, Mayor.
Sorry, move item eight of that. Thank you. Do we have a seconder for that? Thank you, councillor Ireland. Any discussion points, councillor Madsen?
I just reiterate on this point, because I know that there'd be an amount of significant community interest. We deliberated at length on this matter. Some of the discussion had to be undertaken in closed session due to the nature of procurement matters. And I'd offer the brief statement on behalf of the committee that we're all insured to, we're all motivated to ensure that everybody in Ipswich has clean air and can enjoy their life wherever they are, within the city's limits.
Thank you, councillor Madsen. Any other comments? I concur with you, councillor Madsen. That was quite a lengthy discussion and we did go into closed session. I think from my perspective, there was a strong emphasis on that operator complying with the, our local laws, but also the state government's laws and regulations as well. But also making sure that that supplier performs under that contract as well. So I understand that the team are very much focused on that. Councillor Doyle?
Thank you, Mayor. And I think what came out of our discussion was very clear. The terms of our waste directive that we adopted and very passionate about very shortly after being voted is front of mind when we make these deliberations in dealing with contractors. They absolutely need to be on that journey with us. So thank you.
Thank you. Yes, councillor Madsen.
Yeah, just in using the last, the right of reply, I just wanted to reiterate that the preferred tenderer is embarking on some significant changes at their site. And I look forward to them communicating them to the public in the coming months.
Thank you, councillor Madsen. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room. Thank you. And I'll just pause now to wait for the deputy mayor and councillor Feknun to return. Thank you. Move on to item fifteen point three, which is the Community Culture Arts and Sports Committee. And I'll hand over to the Chair of that to see if he'd like to move that, Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor. I'd like to, I would like to move to accept the recommendations of the committee. We discussed three items at the committee. We would...
On Harrison, thank you. Of the three items we discussed at committee, two substantive matters were discussed and voted on. We were tying up the event sponsorship for the A League team, which we celebrated them coming to Ipswich and playing at the North Ipswich Reserve last year, which was a wonderful event for all those that attended. And we also discussed in quite detailed debate, the recreational cycling and walking action plans. And we look forward to seeing the implementation plans that fall out of that. There's a lot for council to commit to in that. It's a document, as I said, at committee with lots of different aspirations. But it's nice to see them in one document for the first time in council's history to say, here's all of the things that we aspire to do, based on more than five hundred, I think more than a thousand respondents in a community engagement exercise. So a wonderful document and I look forward to seeing how we progress with the prioritisation of all of those many competing priorities.
Thank you, councillor Feknun. Do I have a seconder, councillor Kunselman? Thank you. Any discussion or... No, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. We'll now move on to item fifteen point four, which is the Economic and Industry Development Committee. And I hand over to the Chair of that, the deputy mayor, to move.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to follow the recommendations of the committee on the tenth of February, please, and move them.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, councillor Feknun. Any discussion? No, I'll move that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. I'll now move on to item fifteen point five, which is the Environment Sustainability Committee. I'll move over to the Chair for that to see if they'd like to move that.
Thank you, Mayor. At the last meeting, there was four items on agenda. I haven't received any notification that any councillor wishes to pull out any particular item. So I would like to move that council adopt the recommendations of the Environment Sustainability Committee, meeting number one of two thousand and twenty-two, on the tenth of February, two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you. And a seconder? Thank you, councillor Feknun. I'll open up for any discussions and commentary. They're being done? Just checking. I'll move that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. I'll move on to item fifteen point six, which is the Ipswich Central redevelopment committee. I'll just wait for councillor Feknun to leave. Thank you. I'll hand over to the Chair to see if she'd like to move that.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to move to accept the recommendations and the reports, one through to five, in their entirety.
Thank you. Do I have a seconder for that? Thank you, councillor Kunselman. Any discussion or commentary on this report?
Thank you, Mayor. Just make the comment that yesterday was the Retail Subcommittee, which is a subcommittee that sits within the Nicholas Street precinct and deals with leasing matters. And just want to make the comment that I'm pleased with the status report, the update, and looking forward to making some new announcements shortly.
Sounds exciting. Thank you, councillor Doyle. Any other commentary, discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. And I'll pause while we wait for councillor Madsen and councillor Feknun to return. Thank you. I now move on to item sixteen point one, which is the CEO Organisational Performance Report for January two thousand and twenty-two. Does anyone have any questions? They'd like to ask the CEO? No? I move that the CEO's Organisation Performance Report for January two thousand and twenty-two be received and the contents noted. Do I have a seconder for that? Thank you, councillor Milligan. Any discussion on that report? Thank you, councillor Feknun.
Just through you, Mayor, and thank you, CEO, for the transparency with the continuation and the updating of the outstanding items included. I still think that there's quite a few items there that lack detail or an adequate timeline for us to understand when these matters will be resolved. So I look forward to working with you to better understand how we can organise a timeline of events for some of these outstanding matters that we've got. I also just want to understand, and I beg your pardon, the report says the free plant and mobile nurseries are now closed until further notice, but I saw them running on the weekends. So I don't know if that needs to be redacted or not.
Thank you. And through you, Chair, it's the retrospective nature of this report and when it's produced and that it's actually reflecting the month of January. So it's a past look. So I'm very delighted that the mobile nurseries are very much up and running. And yeah, speaking to some of the team yesterday at the River View Depot, they're loving, residents have rushed in huge numbers, as you would be aware, to gather up the plant.
Awesome, thank you.
So yes. But if I may, I take the point again in terms of the status dates, so the estimated dates for completion of actions in that report on outstanding council resolutions and those that of course have been completed. So whilst I'm pleased to see so many completed, I take your point and assure you that we are focusing on these actions every week at our executive leadership team meetings. And I apologize that we haven't got, there's too many TBAs in that report. And so certainly assure you that it's an area of focus for me to get those dates updated and accurate and get those actions completed. We are certainly focusing on that at the moment. Thank you.
Maybe it's just the nature of the report itself. If there was more opportunity to explain some of the actions that have been taken on a few of these items that might go a long way to satisfying the need for the information required to understand what's actually happening. Just an idea.
Thank you, councillor Feknun. This is a matter of discussion. I do note council's proactive approach in managing our own COVID response. And obviously, we're fourteen hundred people and how we manage our service delivery. And thank you, CEO, for ensuring that service delivery. I know there was some times with waste, we had to juggle things around a lot. So thank you to the council team for, at one side, I think we had about twenty-five percent of the staff either with COVID or close contacts. So I thank you for prioritising what the important services for our residents. Any other discussion? I'll put this report to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. Move on to sixteen point two, which is the procurement of tender one six eight three oh. The civil construction works for Springfield Parkway and Springfield Green Bank arterial stage three. Does anyone have any questions of the relevant council officer on these two recommendations? No? In that case, I move this. Do I have a seconder for that, councillor Johnic? Thank you. I move on to discussion. There's no discussion? Nope. Okay. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. I note that the recommendations talked about a confidential attachment. Now that that is passed and there's serious transparency, the supplier is B M D Construction and the price for that contract was twenty-one point eight million dollars X G S T. Thank you, CEO. Move on to sixteen point three, which is the procurement intersection upgrade Queen and Albert Street. Do we have any questions of the relevant council officer on this particular item? No, I move recommendation A, B and C. Do I have a seconder? Thank you, councillor Tully. Any discussion? Yes, councillor Tully?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an important matter and recommendation for the eastern suburbs. It's an intersection on Queen Street just before it turns into Red Bank Plains Road, where there's been a number of fatalities over the years. And I'm certainly pleased, as the community will be, that traffic lights will be installed. The council is, councillor Johnic and I, only received this morning a copy of a notice planned to go out to residents. There'll be pavement upgrades, but this will certainly be an improvement for a road, which is the second busiest suburban road in the city of Ipswich, besides the main roads and highways in the city. So this is something, it's all money. As I always say in local government, everything is money and the time has come and it's good for the community and it's very, very close to a childcare centre as well and leads to the West Side Christians College and the Goodness State School. So I'll just put on record my strong support for this.
Thank you, councillor Tully. I'd like to thank yourself and the deputy mayor for your strong advocacy for getting the works done here as well. If there's no other discussion, I'll put the recommendation A through to C to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. I think it's unanimous and carried. Now that it's carried, the confidential attachment did state that the supplier for this is B M D Construction Limited and the value of the contract is at two point one million dollars X G S T. Thank you. We move on to item sixteen point four, which is the monthly financial performance report for January two thousand and twenty-two. Would anyone like to ask the relevant council officer a question on this? No? Then I'll move the recommendation that is listed here. Do I have a seconder for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle. I'll now open up for any discussion. I think my discussion point is just noting the continued monitoring of our, especially in the capital works space, making sure that we deliver on our capital works programme. And love seeing the fact that our infrastructure and environment department are working so closely with procurement and making sure that these works get done. If there's no other discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. The next particular item is, I think this is a conflict, thank you, sixteen point five. The next item is the Nicholas Street precinct parking access system upgrade. Does anyone have a question of the relevant council officer? Thank you, councillor Doyle. Who would you like to have up? I see Mr Martin making his way. No, he's leaving.
No, sorry. Maybe Mr Madigan, I think.
Mr Madigan, thank you.
Rather than a procurement question, it's more of a product question.
Thank you.
Good morning, Shaun Madigan, General Manager of Infrastructure and Environment.
Thank you, Mr Madigan. I just have a quick question around... Thank you, Mr Madigan. I just have a quick question around, I guess, the flexibility of the system. I guess to implement periods of free parking, noting other shopping centres around Christmas time, you validate your ticket. If you've spent over a certain amount of money and you can park free, we offer currently parking for free for the first three hours. But if we did ever, and I'm not suggesting we will, but if we did decide, does this system allow for that kind of flexibility?
It absolutely does, yes. Yeah, with the confidential discussions that are ongoing in relation to a cinema operator and the like, there is that opportunity to validate parking beyond the three hours if people are frequenting local businesses. So not just necessarily the Nicola Street precinct, but those options are available to us broader.
Yes. So if somebody was attending a cinema and dinner or a show at the civic centre and dinner, that's likely to go beyond the three hours if there's deals that you'll see available.
Absolutely, absolutely. And that's something that I think we, the Nicola Street precinct, will bring to the standing committee in relation to the CBD redevelopment to look at the breadth of, you know, how far we want to expand that capability.
Sure. Okay, great. Thank you.
Councillor Wilson, you had a question?
Thank you, Mr Madigan. I just wondered if there'd be any disruption to service while this is going on.
No, no, it's a very quick process to swap one in and one out.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr Madigan? No, thank you very much, Mr Madigan. I'll move recommendations A and B. Do I have a second for that, councillor Doyle? Thank you very much. Any discussion on this matter?
Thank you, mayor. I just would like to point out that I'm really pleased to see the addition of the licence plate recognition technology. As a frequent user of Brisbane CBD car parks for around twenty three years during my former career, the user experience is really, really important. And so I know we've, you know, improved our car park with additional signage and lighting. And I see the implementation of the licence plate recognition, just the final piece in the puzzle. So really excited to see that implemented.
Excellent. Thank you, councillor Doyle. Any other commentary? No?
Just happy that councillor Doyle brought up that capability and function for the new ticketing machines. Because that's something that, you know, is a bit painful when you do go to paid parking areas in Brisbane and whatnot. So the fact that that can just all be rolled in is a really good economic drive for the businesses and the community if that stay goes over for three hours.
And adds to the user experience, the whole experience and, you know, of a Nicola Street precinct experience that we're looking for.
It's all connected. So thank you.
Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Both recommendations A and B. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. I'll wait for councillor Fitna and Madison. I also note that it's just after ten, so when they come in, I'll ask for an adjournment. Thank you very much. Welcome back. I note that it's three minutes past ten. I'll move for an adjournment till ten thirty. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. See you back here at ten thirty.
Thank you. Welcome back after our adjournment. This is the ordinary council meeting for the 24th of February 2022. We're now up to notices of motion. And the first notice of motion is for review of terms of reference for city council standing committees. And I'll move over to councillor Madison, who's noted some of these.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got an additional recommendation to add to that that I've emailed to everyone.
Has that been given to...
No, inadvertently did not CC the meeting clock, but I've sent it to her now. So if we wait a moment.
Okay. We'll just wait a moment to get that up. Thank you. Would you like to read out the A and B? You got some, Madison?
Well, in B is a grammatical error. So I'd get rid of the part of, if that's okay. So for the writing of the report. Yeah, apologies.
No worries. I'll let you move it, read it out and move it.
I don't believe I have to read it, but I'm happy to read it. Let a report be presented to a future governance and transparency committee reviewing the current terms of reference which city council standing committees includes the purpose, scope and responsibilities of each committee and the overall committee structure. And part B, that a workshop with mayor councillors and the CEO occur as to provide discussion and feedback for the writing of the report.
I believe your microphone's off. Do you mind saying that again? Thank you.
That a report be presented to a future governance and transparency committee reviewing the current terms of reference for switch city council standing committees that includes the purpose, scope and responsibilities of each committee and the overall committee structure. And that a workshop with mayor councillors and the CEO occur as to provide discussion and feedback for the writing of the report. I'm moving A and B together this morning.
Thank you. Do we have a seconder? Thank you, councillor Ireland. While I'm up for discussion, would you like to speak to it, councillor Madison?
I've just been reflecting myself on how we go about our business and I have no real issue with that. I just think it's time to critically reflect. We've been undergoing some training with the Australian Institute of Company Directors. So I think if we review some of the lessons that we've learnt through that and have a run through of how we conduct our committees and how our committees relate to our decision making, it would be a timely piece of work. Having a review doesn't actually suggest that anything will change. I just think it's important that you do critically reflect on things and see if there's things that we can improve on. And if there isn't, great, it's a vindication of the status quo. One thing that I actually would like to really see happen, and it's partly was brought up in discussion earlier today, is I think it should be a bit clearer when matters in the growth and infrastructure and waste committee are enacted by the council. I think we could consider a model where some items come to the council meeting for further discussion and decision making and other items with the addition of another part to the motion. So theoretically a part C and that council exercise the delegated authority to the growth, infrastructure and waste committee as per the terms of reference, just so that there's clarity as to how the decisions are made. I'm supportive of that because not everything in growth, infrastructure and waste needs to occur under that delegated authority. And because we live in a beautiful democracy, I'm more than happy for other members of the committee to share their views on how to proceed on that. So that's just an example of some things that I'd like to discuss. It's about increasing transparency, about how the decision making process occurs. It's a passion of mine. I think it's a passion about many people around this table. So happy to answer any questions, even though we're in discussion.
Any other comments or feedback? I guess speaking about the GIW, it was just interesting how, considering councillor Tully and I being the chair and the deputy chair of GW, we were just speaking earlier this week about the fact that not everything that comes to the growth infrastructure waste committee needs to have its delegation exercised. Then could be better for our, we could get better outcomes and better deliberations if some matters are just a recommendation, like a normal committee, for then to go to the ordinary. But I guess if you were to speak to that, councillor Tully?
Yes, and I originally thought that two years ago, that when the committee was delegated, the powers would be only exercised when it needed to be exercised. But it started to be recorded that every potential recommendation was a decision, which is legally correct. But I think it's the opportunity there to say it's only those ones that are urgent or where a decision has to be made before the next council meeting, because all councillors are members of that committee. I think that can be, could even be resolved through the committee itself at this stage, that if it's going to be a decision rather than a recommendation, that that simply be recorded. You know, that it exercised the power given to it by council on such and such a date.
Thank you. I think councillor Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's a great opportunity at the halfway mark to review our committee structures. I'm also thinking there might be an opportunity, and I'm not sure councillor Madison, if you had this in mind as well, to revisit what our portfolios or the committees look like, noting that some committees are a little light on just through, you know, the nature of what we're doing. And some committee chairs have a huge portfolio and obligations with regard to city events. So it might be an opportunity to reshare the load. Yep.
Thank you, councillor Doyle. Anyone speaking against? Again, yes, councillor William?
Mayor, I thank councillor Madison for bringing this forward. And particularly, it is reinforced as well in the current terms of reference in Under Automated Review and Performance Evaluation 8.1, terms of reference that each committee shall review these terms of reference once per calendar year or as and when required. So this is undergoing the process that as a council, we are obligated to do and that we should do. And the reference of the improvements that we're gleaning from the AICD training that as in our role, this is something that should be brought forward. So I thank councillor Madison for progressing that.
Just checking, there's no one speaking against it. Do you wish you'd like to have a write a reply, councillor Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say to everyone on the committee, bring forward, everyone on the council, I should say. Just bring forward your ideas. Let's get around each other, facilitate what we want to do moving forward. Completely supportive of tabling what you said, councillor Doyle. And in further regard, I think we could set some goals about what sort of things in the next two years we want to achieve through the committee process, highlight some missing strategies, some other elements that we're passionate about getting reviewed, just so that we can ensure that over the next two years, we've got a clear sort of guideline about how we're gonna get into it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We'll move on to item 17.2, which is a notice of motion of proposed amendment of the meeting procedures policy. procedures policy and it's councillor Tully's notice of motion, so I'll hand over to you, councillor Tully.
Thank you, Mayor. I formally move the motion as printed in the agenda.
Thank you. Do we have a seconder for that? Thank you councillor Doyle. I'll leave it to you, councillor Tully, to speak to it.
Yeah, I'll be very brief. This is intended to ensure that councillors have adequate time to consider proposals that are put forward. It brings the mayoral minutes timewise into line with motions by councillors. It protects the right of the mayor to move a mayoral minute without a seconder. And it doesn't prevent the consideration, otherwise a consideration of urgent meetings before council, which is provided for in a suspension of standing orders, understanding order 10 11.1, so that any matter which was of an urgent nature could still be considered via that method or through an officer's report. I think it just tidies up a situation that, you know, ensures that adequate notice would be given in all but urgent matters, or that the council considers are urgent matters and require an immediate decision, if the timing of that fell on a council meeting day.
Thank you. Councillor Doyle as the seconder, would you like to speak to it as well? No? Thank you. I'll just also say that the mayoral minute is a fairly common feature across a range of Queensland councils, particularly in the South East, and its purpose is to allow the mayor to raise community issues at short notice, to ensure council is flexible and efficient enough to respond to the emerging needs of the local community. In our case, the mayoral minute was included in the council's meeting procedure policy in its current form by the interadministrators to ensure that this council has the tools it needs to adequately represent the needs of our residents in the city. I believe I've used the mayoral minutes judiciously. Of the 29 council meetings that could have been used, I've moved a total of six mayoral minutes and last year only two of them. I believe that at the end of the day, I think it's important to note that a mayoral minute can only proceed if it has the support of this council, so it gets debated just like any other motion. And ultimately, the councils in this room decide whether it becomes a resolution of council or not. Thank you. Any other discussion? I put the matter, sorry, I might have applied, my apologies.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I think, I do listen to what's being said, but I think all councillors, or the mayor should be regarded as a first amongst equals, and the councillors themselves could decide, to use your words about short notice being given, that if that's necessary under the suspension of standing orders, that the same result would be achieved, but with the unanimity of all councillors.
Sure. Thank you councillor. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. So it's everyone in the room except for myself. Those against, myself. No abstentions. Thank you. So the matter, the notice of motion is passed and carried. We now have item 17.3, which is a notice of motion by councillor Tully on the proposed additional signalised intersection on the Springfield-Grenbank arterial road, or SGA as we call it. Councillor Tully, I'll hand it to you.
Yeah, I will formally move the motion as printed.
Do I have a seconder for that? Thank you councillor Johnic. Councillor Tully, would you like to speak to it?
Yes, and I think the opportunity should be to explain the background where work is currently proceeding on that section, and the Springfield City Group is anxious to have an additional signalised intersection, which would provide for three signalised intersections in something like 410 metres. That's on the Springfield-Grenbank arterial, south of the Eden Station Drive, towards the overpass, the rail and motorway overpass. Now, our officers had provided a briefing paper, which is extremely thorough, and I've extracted from that 13 very substantial reasons which are embodied into the recommendation that, and I'll touch on each one of them in about 10 seconds, for the sake of completeness, so that the community and the Springfield City Group and the Department of Transport and Made Roads understands our position. Firstly, that it doesn't comply with standards and industry guidelines for a 400 metre minimum of spacing on arterial roads. It doesn't comply with our current development master planning or development approvals. The location would result in a spacing of approximately 300 metres to the Eden Station Drive to the north and 110 to the south, where the new multi-storey car park is being built. There would be significant impact on the efficiency and capacity of the council's arterial road network at that location, and the traffic signal coordination alone would not manage the expected impacts. There are issues about site distance if this was to happen, to have another signalised intersection. The eastern side of the SGA would need to be widened. The existing guardrail to protect the columns of the Springfield Central Rail Overpass Bridge would need to be removed. The number of car parks which remain in the QR car park on the western side of the SGA, that would mean it was not appropriate to introduce another substandard intersection onto the council's arterial road network. The existing signalised intersection of Eden Station Drive and SGA facilitates satisfactory access for pedestrians from the Springfield Anglican College. Otherwise, you'd be splitting it in two. Pedestrian connection between the Anglican College and the additional signalised intersection would be difficult, given the grade difference at this location. The signalised exit from the TMR multi-storey car park to the south will facilitate pedestrian access at that location and doesn't require this signalised intersection. And given that work is currently proceeding, hopefully in time for the majority of the work to be completed before games start to be played at the new AFL and AFLW stadium adjoining this area, that the delivery time and project costs with significant redesign requirements could easily mean a delay. I see no value, I see zero value in this proposal, and this is to provide a council position so that the community, the councillors and those that we deal with and those who are advocating for this understand quite clearly why the council doesn't support this additional set of traffic lights. And might I say, most drivers hate more traffic lights. They accept them, they're safe, but not when you've got another one in the space of 410 metres. That is just, in my view, just ridiculous.
Thank you very much. Councillor Doyle as the seconder, would you like to speak to it as well? I think councillor Tully summed it up quite nicely. Thank you. Will anyone be speaking against it? No, I guess in support councillor Tully, I'll be voting to support this wholeheartedly. I do note too, on top of that, that council are spending $46 million of ratepayers money to increase traffic capacity through there with a duplication of the SGA, and the impact of the lights at the carpet, but also if these lights go on, will actually decrease the capacity, the traffic by over 20%. So it seems, why would we spend $46 million worth of ratepays money to increase capacity when this set of lights will have such a dramatic impact on the decrease of the capacity? It's not fair to the ratepayers. So thank you very much for bringing this notice of motion forward on council's position. Any other comments? Any closing comments councillor Tully?
I'd like to thank councillor Johnic for the nicest thing she's said to me in the last 12 years.
She says lots of nice things about you councillor Tully.
And to you, and that hits the nail on the head, but can I reiterate, the purpose of this is to have a clearly identified council position, not what I said, or councillor Johnic said, or CEO said, or you said, or officers said. This enunciates very clearly to all those involved, away from the council, exactly what the council position is.
Thank you very much councillor Tully. Okay, so I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour? Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. Next we come to 17.4, which is the notice of motion for establishment of a motorsport precinct advisory group. And I'll move to the deputy mayor, who's noticed a motion, it is.
Thank you, Chair. So before I read out my little spiel, I just wanted to amend recommendation C to read, and I've just sent an email quickly to you, Vicky. But it was just to include the wording. Yes. Sorry.
That the membership include Division One councillors?
Yes. My apologies, I'm just bringing it up. So that membership include Division One councillors, along with other members as invited from current leaseholders and permit holders and user groups, along with any other members as agreed by the motorsport precinct advisory group.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So quick spiel about...
So if I could just say that you're moving that?
I'm definitely moving.
And seconding that, councillor Ireland, thank you. Yes.
Is it right to suggest a chairperson and deputy chairperson before we...
I thought I'd let the deputy mayor speak to it first and then...
Okay.
Then go to that, is that okay?
Yep.
If that's okay with the room?
So during the 1980s, the drag racing scene in Queensland was in jeopardy because the encroaching residential area surrounding the surface paradise, drag strip and Carrara was basically failing the sport because of noise restrictions, all of that, we all know about that. So in 1982, a team of fans, racers and their friends and family spent the next three years building the track and facilities at the drag strip, so known as Willow Bank Raceway. They used every weekend, public holiday and days off, clearing paddocks, constructing buildings and fences and preparing the facility to open as a venue for drag racing. However, the group of volunteers had one major hurdle, and of course, it was cash. They needed money for the bitchman for the track, and after trying all the banks with no luck, the founding groups decided to speak to Bill Gunn, who was the state member for the area at the time. Mr Gunn vouched for the group and convinced the ANZ bank to loan a final $250,000 to finish the venue. However, there was one condition on the loan, and the seven directors of the track would need to sign their houses over to the bank as collateral. The 80s was definitely a fantastic era for motorsports. Given that the track was established by the members and their family, straight off the back, they did have life passes that they circulated amongst the membership so that they could attend the track at no cost for life. So that's a little bit of a history on the drag strip. Then Queensland Raceway itself was next to arrive, opening in 1999 and quickly earning the nickname of the paperclip due to its simplistic design. The layout, through designer Tony Slattery, having consideration from the car and motorsport racing authorities, made it a racetrack to remember, and that being the paperclip, obviously. So given their public announcements last Saturday regarding the $11 million worth of federal funding to upgrade and improve the drag strip, so Willow Bank Raceway, and now having Mr Tony Quinn in charge of Queensland Raceways and injecting his own capital of 10 plus million dollars, I think it's fitting that the motorsport precinct as a collective have the opportunity to present to council their long-term vision for the facility in order to assist council in its further consideration for the precinct's future and indeed the future of motorsports in our great city. I for one know that the motorsport precinct is a big, big token and a gem in our region. We're not surrounded by ocean, we're not surrounded by rainforest or lush waterfalls. We are a city, the oldest provincial city in Queensland, but we have this amazing facility on our doorstep, and it stretches across to all different demographics. It's not the rev head, it's not the annoying cars with boosters that annoy people at night time when they're changing gears. It's from that to people that have a genuine interest in collectibles, from Mini Mokes to XY GT Hoes. It's something that everyone can connect with, and there's a major undercurrent of motorsport in Ipswich's blood. I know that we live here predominantly because of the proximity to the racetrack and the fact that our cars don't have to get towed there, then they won't break down on the way and overheat. And it's a gem in our city, and I'm very, very passionate, and I would, I think that it's just the perfect time for us to come together and for the precinct stakeholders to come together and just reiterate and share their future plans and how important it is to our city and our residents.
Thank you. Councillor Ireland as the seconder, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also like to add that the Ipswich Kart Club has juniors from five years old racing out there, and that's where our Formula One drivers are going to come from. So there's a lot of interesting sport, motorsport going on, and I wholeheartedly support this establishment of the advisory group because they don't have anyone as a collective to talk to. So thank you.
Thank you. I was just going to suggest, now that the mover and seconder have spoken to it, if you'd like to propose who will be the chair or deputy chair, or councillor Doyle, you had your hand up?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to go on record with my support of the notice of motion and commend councillor Johnic. I too have a lot of connections to the car culture that, you know, has existed in Ipswich for a very long time, and that's via my parents and my dad and mum regularly talk about the days when you would have your girlfriend's name apparently above the number plate. And my husband was a very big part of the car culture as well. But however, aside from that, I just, I'm fully supportive of this, I'm just thinking from a governance perspective, until the scope and the remit of the group is determined, maybe only then it can be decided if it's appropriate to have a councillor as a chair or one of the external parties as a chair. Look, I may be wrong, I just...
I'll direct that back to the mover.
I believe that it's the governance of the group is not going to have any authority. It's more of a group to obtain visions and knowledge to then come to council, but without any authority as such.
So it's a coordination role, more centralized?
That conduit, a formal conduit, is that...
Re-establishing that, that has gone by the wayside, I guess, for many years, and seeing that there's new blood out there and new funding. It's definitely not something to have an authority level within it. It was just a, it's a piece of advisory to collectively gain, to then bring to council for...
Well, then perhaps if it's more of an informal group, for want of a better word, but if at some point moves to a more formal structure and levels of authority are introduced and funding potentially, we need to revisit, I think, the governance, the terms of reference and what the makeup should be.
So I note that this is a motorsport precinct advisory group. Are you saying you'd like to see some terms of reference? Should we add that in, is there be some terms of reference in there? Would that satisfy that or not really?
Well, I don't want to overstate the purpose of the group and complicate it, so I just had in mind that there would be terms of reference developed. However, if that's not the case, then it's probably okay as it is.
Just to clarify, I guess from a draft terms of reference that I'm reviewing, the working group, I guess, carries no formal authority and is convened only to make informed and appropriate recommendations to the council.
Okay.
Majority or consensus is not required for any matter under consideration. The group is required to present all views of its members when undertaking its reporting requirements. So again, it's just an informal measure to gain intel from the key stakeholders, to then bring it to council for any decisions or funding recommendations, I guess.
So probably no different to the committees, the advisory groups we had in place in the past with community groups like our heritage... with community groups like our heritage advisory committee, it's that type of... Yeah.
Yeah, I definitely don't have any intent to take that away.
On that basis, I'm happy as it is.
Thank you. Yes, councillor Ireland?
Mayor, I just wanted to say that as you're aware, when we went out to the Ipswich Kart Club, when there's, because they're all volunteer organisations and some of the CEOs or presidents don't live in Ipswich, it was, I think it will help those sort of clubs to know who's who and to know who their state and federal members are because there's no one to give out that advice. And I think that, not advice, but to let them know how the Ipswich LGA works. And I think that this is a wonderful way for people to come together.
Okay. I think councillor Tully, you had your hand up, but I'm not sure if it's been addressed or not.
Yes, it has. I was going to, largely, I was going to suggest to paragraph D that the matter be reviewed or the group be reviewed after twelve months. But I think that's going to probably happen anyway based on what direction it takes. So I'm happy with that.
Okay. Thank you. I guess I'll ask the mover and the second before we can proceed. We do need to nominate a chairperson and deputy chair. Would you, I guess I could put forward, would you like to be the chair?
I would definitely love to be involved. And I don't want to take anything away from anyone else who is passionate as well. But if I am nominated, I would be happy to take the role, knowing that it isn't in my division as well. But I feel that it encompasses a lot of economic development as well and...
So knowing it's in Division One, should we nominate perhaps councillor Madsen or councillor Ireland as the deputy chair? Would that be something that you put forward?
I would nominate councillor Madsen because I'm not into the world.
So as the mover and the second, deputy mayor, would nominating yourself as the chair and councillor Madsen as the deputy chair, would that be, you'd be happy to amend recommendation B?
B, yeah, to that extent.
Councillor Ireland, are you, you're okay with that? Yep, thank you. So may we alter that? Thank you. Thank you. I'll now open it for further discussion. Thank you, councillor Madsen.
I just wanted to reiterate a point that councillor Ireland raised, but bring a bit more into it because councillor Johnick was talking about a conduit for council. It's also a really good conduit for all the groups out there and strategic partnerships that they can form with what they do. There's little things where, you know, you need motorsport officials because you're having like a race day weekend. Well, maybe the other clubs have people that can help out. They already get involved with things like CMC and other large events in what we would refer to as the precinct. We'll have to come back, I guess, to renaming that. But nah, I wouldn't suggest that. But the main thing is, there's a lot of passionate people out there with big ideas. As time goes on, I think what we've got in terms of a motorsport facility is really going to end up being the best one in Queensland because the urban encroachment that councillor Johnick talked about with the Surfers Paradise Drag Strip, that's occurring everywhere. And this particular precinct was set up with a buffer and may we protect the buffer in our planning scheme? Because it's an economic asset to our city. And I've got a pretty firm idea that as things go ahead, the economic activity there will increase as South East Queensland's population booms.
Thank you. I'll have a question just to deputy mayor. Was it your intent that any of the councils who wish to be involved in the advisory group could be part of it? Or was there any limitation on that?
Yeah, definitely. There was no intention for any exclusion. I tried to make it as open-ended as possible for anyone who wanted to participate and then leave it to the membership themselves for invitations to go out to other stakeholders that they see fit. And just to councillor Ireland's point about the kart club and the dirt club as well, that's where our young up-and-comers do start. So I didn't intend to miss the smaller clubs that are definitely part of that overall facility. Yeah, I'm holistic about the possibilities of this advisory group.
I strongly support this notice of motion. I thank you, deputy mayor, for bringing it forward. I think we've got a mix of business models out there. Queensland Raceway is a commercial entity, the others are volunteer organisations. And they all have different structures and setups and boards and so on. So I think they've been crying out for this. So I'll be supporting this notice of motion. Are there any other discussion points? No? Deputy mayor, would you like to, any final points before I call a vote? No, thank you. I'll call a vote on recommendations A through to C. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. There is a seventeen point five with a proposed notice of motion for the next meeting. So not something for deliberation today, but just, I guess, a notice for a notice of motion. Councillor Doyle, will I hand over to yourself?
Thank you, mayor. This is a foreshadowed notice of motion for the next ordinary meeting in March. And the proposed notice of motion will read, A, that council, sorry, and this notice of motion relates to the water reservoir at For Madsen Close Eastern Heights. A, that council write to Urban Utilities advising that the water reservoir at For Madsen Close Eastern Heights has been identified for inclusion as a structure of heritage significance in the draft Ipswich planning scheme. B, that council request from Urban Utilities any heritage assessments or other documentation relating to the water reservoir. C, that council's planning and regulatory services department prepare a report that considers the heritage and historic significance of the water reservoir and that this report be presented to the April GIW committee meeting of council. And D, that council investigate and consider making an application to the Queensland Heritage Council for the asset to be included on the state register.
Thank you very much for that notice of, that proposal notice of motion, councillor Doyle.
May I have another notice of motion?
You have, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
So seventeen point six, councillor Tully.
Yeah, I'll read it out. I haven't yet provided it to Vicky, but I will do so on the conclusion of the meeting. That sections nine point one, nine point one point one and nine point one point two of the meeting procedures policy be deleted and the following inserted in its place. Nine point one, notice of matter for consideration at a council meeting or committee meeting. Nine point one point one, any councillor proposing a matter be considered at a council meeting or committee meeting must give notice in writing to the chief executive officer at least five business days before the relevant meeting. That nine point one point three of the meeting procedures policy be renumbered nine point one point two and be amended by deleting the last dot point. The last dot point in the policy.
Okay. Thank you very much for that notice. I'd like to propose a seventeen, I guess seventeen point seven. I propose a mayoral motion for the next ordinary council meeting. Just a very simple to create, I'd like to put a notice of motion up, sorry, a mayoral motion to create an Ipswich Legacy 2032 summit. Are there any other notice of motions for...
Yes, thank you, Chair. So I give notice of the following motion I intend to move at the Ipswich City Council meeting on March the twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, that the mayor formally apologised to deputy mayor Nicole Johnick for incorrectly alleging at the council meeting on the twenty fourth of February, two thousand and twenty-two, that councillor Johnick had raised or discussed the issue of radio advertising in a debate on item sixteen point six procurement online advertising at the council meeting on the twenty seventh of January, two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you. Any other notices of motion? Okay, thank you. Any questions on notice? No? If I may briefly depart from standing orders to wish councillor Ireland a happy birthday? If that's okay, today is your birthday. It was lovely to have a birthday cake in the break. So if I may depart from standing orders, I move that I wish happy birthday to councillor Ireland. All those in favour, raise your hands. Unanimous. Councillor Ireland, on behalf of council, on behalf of us here, happy birthday today. Happy, have a wonderful day.
Thank you very much, everybody. It's great at my age to still be walking and doing that.
Thank you. I now move that we go back into, I now move that we move back to meeting procedures. All those in favour? Thank you, it's unanimous. The meeting is now closed at eleven oh nine. Thank you.